All right, let's go ahead and get started. We want to welcome everyone here to our city council meeting that's here in our chambers and welcome all those who are watching on TV land. I've asked Councilman Argal to give us a word of prayer.
Our dear Father, have we humbly our heads before Thee this time and we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve in the government of Spanish Fork City. We ask Thy Spirit to be here as we make decisions concerning the citizens of this great community. We're grateful for this community and it's an awesome place to raise a family and grow up and we're grateful for the decisions that are made and the continuing effort to make this city a great city in the state of Utah. We ask a blessing upon those who are serving and on each one of the citizens that they will be aware of the government around them and participate in that and join in as we make efforts to make Spanish Fork a great place to live. And we ask and say these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. I'd ask Councilman Gordon to lead us in pledge allegiance.
Would the audience please rise and repeat the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Okay, let's move down to public comment. Anyone here in the public that would like to address the mayor and council, you can come and just walk right up there and stand there and state your name and you get your three minutes of fame.
My name's Ronald Max Johnson. Oops. I've been a citizen of this lovely town for 62-plus years. 62-plus years ago, I married one of your local Bells and he and she and I have been married all these years. We've had three children and numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Years ago, I worked with and was on the board of directors of the Little League program in both the Little League and the Pony League and the Colt League for many years. I was a founding charter member of the Spanish Fork Gun Club and I've just enjoyed many, many years working around here with the various things in this town. I also have been a staunch member, a supporting member of the Spanish Fork Golf Course, which I've had a paid a yearly greens fee for better than 20 years. And I spent 26 years in the Utah National Guard. I spent 43 years at Geneva and I just thought I'd come down and make a little proposal relative to what I feel about the golf course. I'd like to make a proposal to the council that if a person had lived in this town for 20 years minimum and they had supported the golf course by paying their yearly dues and numerous dues or cart fees for at least 15 years and attained the age of at least 80, that a person would be granted a lifetime greens fee free of charge by this city, like you've done with many of the retiring members of the people that work for the city. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your service and all that, especially in the National Guard and also here in the city. We appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's go to council comments. How about Councilman Scov, since you're in TV land? I should mention Councilman Scov is quarantined, so he's here in TV land with us and so do you have anything?
No, Mayor, I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember back.
Just a couple of things. Today I was told that our youth city council, those kids have been asked with the Chamber of Commerce to do a drive-through this year. So these kids that have just been waiting in the wings to serve, they're super excited to have an opportunity this spring to give back and serve. And one of my coworkers today, his daughter was on youth city council for a couple of years and she's now in her first year at BYU. She said that all of her interviews, scholarships, jobs, anything, the most asked question or inquiry is, "Tell us more about your experience on youth city council." Sometimes these scholarships or applications can look really similar, living in the same area, and it's an option or an opportunity to help our youth stand out. So this spring, if any of your youth are wanting to join or serve youth city council, the application period actually is open all year, but the biggest drive is during the spring and that's from ninth grade up to 12th. So good opportunity to learn about local government, the city of Spanish Fork, and just have opportunities monthly to serve. And other than that, I feel like my assignments have been a little bit slow the last couple of months, so I'm looking forward to going to new networking with the Chamber of Commerce this Thursday where it will be live and we will not be meeting on Zoom, so.
Councilman Mendenhall.
The only thing to piggyback on what Councilmember Beck said, the Chamber of Commerce is going to do a drive-through trick-or-treat this year, so watch for...
Easter egg hunt.
Excuse me. Yes, we're not going to do trick-or-treat. It's going to be a live trick-or-treat, let's hope. But Easter egg hunt, so watch for more details to come, how you and your family can participate in that. We'll be there as the city council and youth city council and all the great businesses in town, so watch for more details coming out shortly about that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Councilman Gordon.
I just wanted to report, we had a Mount Nebo water meeting this morning and discussed the usual topics mainly at this time of year, talking about any possible legislation to deal with water and it's a relatively slow year for that and that's a good thing with COVID and not having the ability to be on the Hill to talk with our representatives about any pending litigation with water. So discussed that in length and of course all the other budgetary items and things and that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. All I want to do is just say thanks to the departments. We had our annual weekend where the budget was presented to the council and the mayor and I know that takes a lot of effort to put together a budget for the next year and look forward to what the needs and wants in that area of the city and those each departments. And I know that takes a lot of effort and especially our manager and assistant manager then to put that together and present it to us and just grateful for their time and effort to keep us informed and to move this city forward. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I just want to agree with Councilman Argal on that, on our meeting with all the department heads, they spend a lot of time putting together all their information for the coming year and updating us and helping us so we can make informed decisions on what we need to go and where we need to go forth with the city. I had the opportunity this week to meet with Congressman Burgess Owens and if you can see right there, yeah, you've noticed there, I finally got my Super Bowl ring. He played for the Oakland Raiders and won a Super Bowl and he let me wear that ring to take that picture and I, and he expected me to give it back to him. I can't figure out what the deal was there, but it was a great privilege to be able to meet with our congressman. They were concerned about our needs, what we need here in Spanish Fork and what they can do to help and so we had a good conversation. I explained some of the things that we were doing in our city and he was impressed with a lot of things. He was concerned about the small business and so I kind of mentioned to him our coupon, how we sent that out to all the businesses, all the members, or all the citizens and how it benefited the businesses and he was pretty impressed by that. And so I think he'll be a good voice for us and he's willing to listen to us, so it was nice to be able to meet with him and let him know all about Spanish Fork. Okay, let's move on to Spanish Fork 101, Citizens Academy. We've got Sergeant Nielsen and Sergeant Harding.
Thanks, Mayor and councilmembers. We're grateful that you could give us a few minutes here to talk about a program that we're going to be starting here in the next, hopefully six to eight weeks. Wasn't supposed to do any ums, did one for Seth right there. Kind of give a little history on the Citizens Academy. This was actually supposed to happen last year. Chief Adams wanted to do something more to engage with the citizens of Spanish Fork and proposed an idea to do the Citizens Academy. It's been done in other agencies and other communities in the county and it's a good, it's a good thing that we can do to engage with the citizens, to explain what the police department does. So he came last year in about the same timeframe, February, and then all of a sudden, we don't know what happened, we had a pandemic, which put it basically to a grinding halt. So here we are again, a year later, hoping to move this program forward and engage the citizens of Spanish Fork a little bit more. So our objectives are basically to, like I say, to engage the citizens. A lot of people think they know what police work is, they see on TV, they know what they see on TV, they see what's happened with riots and things like that. They think they know what police work is and it's nothing like TV, it's nothing like what's portrayed in the, in movies and things like that. So hopefully we can build a gap, give some training, some information, why we do things the way we do and the citizen can understand why we do certain things, why there's two officers on a domestic call, why there's, you know, multiple officers on a traffic accident and things like that. So hopefully we can bridge that gap and give that information to those citizens and they can take that out into the community and the more we do this training, hopefully they can, more people we can get involved so they know what police work's like. So Sergeant Harding's done 99% of this work, so kudos to him, he's done most of it. I'm going to just do about 1% of it here, but we're going to go through kind of what we're going to go through as a academy, as Citizens Academy, and what hopefully we can teach the public on it. So we're going to go over a various range of topics, all pertaining to the law enforcement, the structure, the structure of the department and all these things we're going to go through real quick and how we function, what different type of organizations, assignments we have in each field in the, in the grand scheme of the, the police department itself. And the majority of the police department is very excited to be involved in this. Sergeant Harding sent out a letter to all the, the officers in the department finding out who wanted to be involved in, in this academy and he had an overwhelming response back from the different members of our police department that wanted to engage with the public in this. So we'll talk about our department structure, how we, you know, we are based on a military structure, on lieutenant sergeants, the chief and people underneath that. We're also going to talk about dispatch, you know, the true first responders that take the immediate call of people's worst life, or worst days of their lives and then dispatch out to those calls. So we'll also talk about our patrol officer skills, you know, patrol officers on the line officers that are out there every day doing everything from traffic accidents in the snow to respond on medical calls and those type of things. So we'll go over some patrol basics, things they do, and then we'll go over some scenarios with that. We also have our K-9 unit that the council has been kind enough to grant us and we'll go through what the K-9 officers do, the selection, selection process for that, how they deal with the drugs and sniffing for drugs. We'll also talk about drug recognition and our drug officers, we'll talk about drug enforcement efforts within the community. We'll talk about investigations and how they process crime scenes. We'll have a mock crime scene for the citizens that are in the academy can go through and learn some different aspects. It isn't CSI, it's, it's nothing that great, but it can definitely give some insight on why things are done a certain way. We'll also talk about our use of force, that's a big thing, especially with all the riots over the course of the last year. What is a use of force policy? What is a use of force? Taser incident SWAT, when do we use SWAT, the equipment they use and why they do the things they do. And we do have a little snippet of a use of force with a taser. And if you can't tell, that is Councilman Gordon.
Wait, wait, wait. Relax. There you go. Taser, taser, taser. Oh, 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 oh. Okay, let's go, stop.
It was a good time, right? It was a great time.
Does it hurt watching it?
PTSD.
So we'll go over that, use of force and most everyone in the department's been tased and it's not fun, so we'll go through some of that kind of stuff. We'll talk about emergency vehicle operations, running code three, that's when our licenser sirens, how we go through lights and we've got the OptiCom technology that the councils provided that can help us clear through intersections for safety and all those type of things. We'll actually have the people go through a cone course to try to show them what, what we've learned, what we train on and see if they can get that same type of training. We'll also have some firearms training, vertebra. I think most of you have all been through the vertebra training. We'll do some of that training, firearm safety, some firearm skills and actually go up in the range and do a little bit of shooting. So Sergeant Harding's going to talk about what the requirements are for those that are in the academy.
Yeah, so I'm just going to cover a little bit of the logistics about who qualifies and kind of what the academy's going to entail, so it's, we anticipated to be about an eight or nine, nine-week course with one night a week for approximately three hours and then we're also going to have one daytime course on a Saturday that'll be most likely the range days so that we're up there in good weather and good lighting. We're going to look to limit our participants in the program to 12 to 20. We'd like to have as many people go through as are wanting to do it. We simply are going to limit it just so that everybody has a good experience and there can be plenty of interactions and then everybody can get involved in the different things that we're doing. So the coursework's going to consist of, there'll be training in classroom, practical scenarios and then just some practical hands-on type stuff with the crime scene and processing and that kind of thing. Our qualifications, we're setting at 21 years old. You either have to be a resident or work in Spanish Fork. Right now, we don't really know really how much, we're hoping to have a lot of interest. If we need to limit people, we're going to try to give preference to those who, people who actually are residents of Spanish Fork for the first shot at getting into the academy with us. And then you also have to be able to pass a background check and then there'll be a liability waiver that you have to be willing to sign off before you can get involved with the Citizen Academy. So all we'd really say is if you're out there and you're interested, watch for more information to come out on social media and on the city website as we get ready to roll this out. We'll make sure we post it on our social media accounts and give you some links to where you can go. The application process is going to be an online application initially, so it should be fairly easy. If you're a person that's interested and don't want to do the online application, get ahold of us at the PD and we can, we can work through that. And then, you know, we're just excited to get it going and we hope that people are interested and come and be part of it, so that's all we really have.
Great. Hey, thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Super excited.
Okay, thank you guys.
Councilman Gordon was wondering if he could do tear gas training next time.
We don't do that anymore, do we? We don't want any of that.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. I think this will be a great, great service to the city and those who take it will get to understand what our police officers are all about. Okay, let's move on to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, public hearing, we got Canyon Creek Project Sign Plan Approval Request.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I actually don't think there is a public hearing necessary with this. You're, I believe, welcome to hold one if you want.
Well, it's just under public hearing, so.
Yep, clearly, but...
Well, say it's not.
Okay. I thought you might feel that way.
Thank you.
The Canyon Creek developments, that's the project that Costco and Walmart and Lowe's and Hobby Lobby now are all in. That has a special type of signage package that is called a project signage plan and we're here tonight because the developer of the project, Woodbury Corporation, would like to add an additional sign. I understand that that's coming about at the request of one of the future tenants, their Home Goods, and that this additional sign would be located, the way that I describe it is, north of the building that's under construction now, which is north of the building that TJ Maxx and Down East Outfitters and some others there along the, I would say the west side of the development are all in. Between that and the hospital, basically on a street that's called Marketplace Drive, that's the street that runs between the retail part of the development and the hospital site. If I remember right, that, that sign would be about 30 feet tall. And simply put, staff doesn't have any concerns with that additional sign at that location. The council's all been given a copy of the proposed modified project signage plan with that sign. I appreciate the time that Mr. Spencer, representing Woodbury, has taken to update some other things, I'd call them kind of cleanups from previous renditions of the project signage plan to really give us a document that I think will be easy to use going forward. Really, the only thing that we've talked about relative to the proposed change and just going forward with the project is the use of some screens that haven't yet been installed on any of the signs in the development. So for example, you can see this right here, that is a proposed LED screen. That particular sign there, that's one of the, well, this is maybe a better example to use, this sign right here. Those signs have been installed, I would describe it on I-15, and they were constructed without that LED screen on the top of it, like we see with the sister image right to the next of it. The existing approved signage plan would allow for the installation of that LED screen on the top and as staff, we're, we're not suggesting that the applicant be required to change that at all. But just for some perspective, this screen here is, is very close to the same size. I think the aspect ratio is a little bit different than a traditional billboard, but that's, that's very close to the size of a billboard, whereas some of the other signs that also are eligible for LED screens are smaller than that, but you can see that there are a few different types of signs in the project that are, that are currently eligible for the use of that kind of digital signage copy. We're not concerned moving forward about having that digital copy space added to signs, we're just concerned about making sure that the signage for the project is limited to providing exposure for businesses that are in the development. So to say that differently, we would like to do what we can now to make sure that all of the signage space is used for on-premise purposes. What that does, for example, you know, should they install a screen like this, that would give a business like Lowe's that doesn't have ready visibility from either I-15 or US Highway 6, some really, really good visibility and not just them because it's not a static display, it's dynamic, it could be changing, you know, on some kind of a cycle. It could be beneficial to other businesses in the project as well, which we see value in. But again, we are concerned about that potentially being used maybe to advertise businesses elsewhere in the community or for that matter even in other cities and, you know, otherwise not benefiting the businesses in Canyon Creek. We've had a few conversations with the applicant about that. Mr. Spencer and I just touched base a few minutes ago before the meeting and I'll let you weigh in certainly here, but as I understand it, Woodbury is willing to enter into an agreement that simply, in my view, would say that all signage copy would be, would be limited to advertising businesses in the development or something to that effect. However, maybe Mr. Pecel wanted to help us get that worded so that going forward, we would have that, that understanding clearly articulated and in place. We did talk a little bit about perhaps exactly when that agreement would need to be in place by. A lot of times when we're working on things like that, we like to have that kind of documentation settled before we issue building permits. Mr. Spencer's asked maybe that we, instead of holding up building permits for the next two signs that they want to build, we go ahead and issue those permits and find a different, you know, maybe backstop, I would say, to making sure that that agreement gets signed. It could be occupancy for a particular building and maybe Andy, it'd be good for you to, to share your thoughts on that. And as staff, I think we're comfortable with whatever the council wants to do on that timing aspect of just making sure that that agreement's in place, but as long as that's done, I think in the next month or two, we're, we'll be in great shape moving forward and maybe we can avoid some headaches that have plagued other communities with digital copy signage.
You want to say anything? I'm sorry that my officer's left.
We appreciate being here and as Mr. Anderson's indicated, it's really at the request of one of our tenants and that they were here and hopefully that reinforces the need for the signage. We feel the signage has been really successful through the project and we received a lot of compliments on it, both inside the city and those that are investigating the project. And so that's really what brings us here is that Home Goods has requested that one additional signage on Marketplace that didn't have any pylon signage, but that's been kept fairly modest. It's 27 feet, so in comparison with all the other signs, which are more like anywhere from 40 to 50 feet, just depending on, you know, where you are in the project on most of them that you see. So it's a little more modest, but it was very important to them, so, and we would appreciate consideration on timing for the agreement. We understand the reasoning that cities require in that, but those type of agreements oftentimes take a day or two to work out and we've got tenants that were under construction for and so we need to get the signs going for them, but, so we would appreciate that we have, you know, a little time to work out that agreement.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the proposed amended sign, signage plan for Canyon Creek, subject to the applicant entering into a contract with Spanish Fork City to limit signage advertising to on-premise uses.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go down to FY 2021 Budget Revision Number Two.
Mayor, before Kent goes, I just want to throw you a curveball because I love doing this to you.
I know it.
But I don't know that we've ever had the budget hearing and the rate increase at the same time, which I think is right, I think is great to do, but the budget has the SFCN rates in it, so if you, if you'll indulge me on this, Kent's going to do the presentation on the budget, which requires a public hearing. The rate increase for SFCN does not, but it's a part of the budget, so let's do the public hearing and then before you approve the budget, let's have Brian come up and do his SFCN rate increase. And then when Brian's done, consider the approval of the rate, the SFCN rate increase and the approval of the budget.
You know, I was always a good curveball hitter. Just wanted you to know that.
I've seen videos even recently of you hitting curve, or at least swinging at curveballs.
That's right. All right, we can do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I got to play the laser today. Here we are again for a budget. This is revision number two, since the first, the first budget was adopted in August with the truth and taxation hearing. So I'm going to walk through a couple of the changes. The new budget for a total amount in the end is going to be 138 million and some of the funds went up, some of the funds went down. I'm going to briefly go through some of those. Here is a snapshot, the same as that picture that we just talked about here, it's the different groups of the funds. You'll see in the end, right there, the budget amount increased $6 million and for the most part, I'll walk through what that was. You can see that the general fund went in up 2 million, the enterprise funds went down 2 million and the miscellaneous capital project funds went up 6 million and so I'm going to walk you through what those were. It's kind of hard to see this, there's lots of numbers on one page. I'm gonna walk you through some of these numbers that are larger. So, you can see on the top here, um, general government, the majority of that fifty-six is, um, the employee recognition at Christmas time, um, adjusting for that. The next one down is planning, this is additional professional services that are, uh, being done and used by the planning department. The, uh, police department, this is, you'll be hearing about adding a new officer and equipment. This one is emergency preparedness, this is the account that we ran the CARES funds, uh, CARES Act money from, uh, federal money that funneled through the city. This is where we, uh, received the money and spent the money out of, is in the general fund. And the last one here is the parks, uh, which Dale probably have more detail about the five hundred thousand is, but for the most part, a big chunk is, uh, some projects, meaning the, this, the playground stuff, uh, equipment at the city park is in that one. Is that right, Dale? So, those are the general fund, probably the big one, uh, in a total of two point eight million increase, uh, those are the big ones, there are some smaller ones that are in there. Um, here's the revenue categories, uh, this document will be available if you can't read the small amounts. Um, I may have to look back here for this one. Um, sales tax, this is increases for the revenue funds to offset those expenses that, uh, we've just increased. Um, sales taxes, we're estimating to be collected more. Um, building permits, an additional revenue. And the grants, uh, the eight hundred thousand was the, this year's share of the CARES grant that came in for the, the COVID nineteen funds. Um, FOL, the revenue is, is a boom year for the Festival of Lights, budgeting extra revenue. Um, and down at the end, uh, some of that CARES money was received last year, and we're, um, using that money or spending that money in this year's budget, even though the money was received last year. And so, that's what that bottom num- bottom arrow is. Here are the enterprise funds, uh, you can see some of those went up, some of them went down. Um, the main, the large one there is about four million in the sewer plant. We did issue bonds in, uh, this year, and we're anticipating spending the money over the next three years. So, we've adjusted expenditures in the sewer plant for what we plan to spend between now and the end of June, um, anticipating, we, we bonded for, uh, about seventy-three million, uh, received about eighty-three million, and we're anticipating large capital projects in the sewer plant over the next couple of years. This is just adjusting the actual estimated res- expenditures down. Um, the other ones are project-driven, as far as for the majority of the, the changes, certain projects that are accelerated and some are adjusted to be deferred to a future year. So, in all, it decreased almost three million dollars in this one. These are the miscellaneous funds, and you can see the large one, uh, two large one in there, in the capital projects, this is the library. So, we're anticipating, uh, later this month is to issue the bonds for the new library and being, uh, run through a fund that we call the, uh, Local Building Authority. And so, right now, we're just creating, whoops, I'm gonna get the right one, um, we're just creating this fund this year to handle that. So, nothing's budgeted in there at this point, but as we get through the project and the bonds are, are issued, those funds are being expended, expended out of the capital project funds, which is for the new library. But gradually, it's gonna migrate to the le- uh, Local Building Authority Fund to handle the construction and the, the, the rest of that project. So, I'm gonna review, um, with the council and the document that you have, I didn't print all of these, but, uh, you can review those, uh, fee changes. There are several pages of fee changes that, uh, are proposed on a number of different utility accounts, um, even s- um, the golf course re- reservation or the reception center, those have some fee adjustments inside those also. I'm not gonna review each one of those now, but they are in the document that's available. Okay, as far as personnel changes in this budget revision, um, many of these were employee changes that were anticipated last year this time, but with COVID, it was, um, decided to suspend and not do certain hiring until some more information is, is given and we get further into the recovery of the COVID and what the impact it has on the economy and our revenue streams. So, as you look through here, these are the, many of these are, are, were planned to start last summer, but are late in implementing until now. So, in the parks and recreation, there are a couple of employees that are new positions on a restructure. We had employees retire and the restructuring of how, uh, the leadership in those departments and how they're being paid for. Um, there's a fairground secretary position, it's new, uh, full-time coordinators and converting some from a part-time position to a full-time position. Public safety has, like I said, has a new officer and all the equipment and car that goes with that. Fire department has new turnout equipment for the new station, and the ambulance has a new pay structure and leadership structure that they're funding at this time. Um, public works has a couple of new positions, converting some from part-time to full-time in the garbage area and the water area and in the GIS, uh, mapping section. And there are, uh, expenses to cover vehicle allowances and some of those, uh, public work employees, and also to add some hours to the finance and utilities office, some part-time workers there. This is, uh, an item that we've talked about a couple of times, it's, uh, kind of small print, it's hard to look at this right now, but, uh, this is advertised as a public hearing also for donations and a fee waiver and cash donations that the city does, um, offer or to help certain causes, um, if they meet the requirements, uh, of the policy. One that's in yellow on there is one that's been requested to be added to this list and kind of be, to be discussed with the council. Um, you can probably wait and do this as part of the public hearing, if you want to discuss that then. Their proposal is in an email to us of what they're asking for, and we can go through what that proposal is, uh, when we, when you want to talk about it specifically. Okay? What do you want to do now?
Sorry, Kent, quick question.
Okay.
Am I, so, on the expenditures, you show that one point seven million, which was for our CARES Act, but isn't that kind, did we not get that back? And I don't see where, then the funds coming in.
It's in the, in the, in the revenue section.
Okay.
Under grants.
So, the two of them, the per-
The one, uh, two point one was received last year.
Right.
And another eight hundred thousand this year.
Okay.
So, that's, eight hundred thousand is in this year's, but the money was expended all in, in this year's.
This year's, okay.
So, that does mean that some of the revenue to cover the rest of those expenditures will come out of the fund balance, uh, because we received the money last year, so we basically put it in the bank account, and we're expending more than the grant this year, so we'll pull some of that CARES money out of that bank account, if you will, to cover the rest of those. We received, I think, total two point eight or two point nine million, and so far, in this fiscal year, we've spent one point seven. We spent a handful of dollars in last fiscal year, but that was more, most of that was just in employee time. Um, so, we still have, we actually still have about a million dollars in, in that fund, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I don't know if you want to, do you want me to do the Millennial Choir right now? Okay. Um, one of the, uh, requests is, uh, for a group, the Mill- Millennial Choir, they were here in two thousand fifteen. Um, they're asking for the city council to participate in the form of waiving some of the fees for the arena and, um, some of the revenue stream of what we charge when somebody uses our ticketing, uh, system, SF City Ticks. Um, they are proposing that the city waive one day rental, which is a thousand, they'll pay the second day rental of a thousand, and they're asking us to waive three hundred and fifty dollar the first day when they unload all of their equipment for our partial day. So, the part, the three fifty's the first day of a partial day, the, the second day is one thousand, which they ask for those two to be waived, and then the third one, um, they would pay the, the thousand dollars on that one. So, the total of the cash wave at that point is thirteen hundred and fifteen, fifty dollars. But there's also when any, when uses the, if, the arena or the ticketing process, that the revenue stream, that they would share with the city ten percent of that revenue stream, and they're asking for that whole amount to be waived. Um, it's up to the ca- the city council to, to decide whether it's the full ten percent or five percent or two percent or no percent. Uh, so, they're requesting, uh, to waive the ten percent that would normally come to the city to give that back to them, let them retain that. Um, so, any of those, they're, they're looking for any option, those are some of the things that they proposed. Um, recommendation would probably, uh, I'll go out on a limb to, to, uh, grant the, the ones that are the thirteen fifty and maybe a portion of the ten percent, but that's again, up to the council's decision on what type of a donation. Um, they're five oh three C, they meet the, the qualifications, um, to receive, uh, a donation or a fee waiver. So, at this time, if you'd like to add them to this list and what dollar amount you would like to donate to them, if you'd like to donate anything.
We, we reviewed this one per the finance policy, the donation policy that we've reviewed with you, uh, Kent, Dale, and I, and as we reviewed everything, all, all that they have requested, as well as the different avenues that we have, I think what Kent just outlined is what we would, what our recommendation is, that we, we waive some, we reduce some, and we leave some, so that it's not a full, a full waiver of all things. Uh, but there is, there is a, a significant amount that is, that is donated to this oper- uh, to the operation, that's not the right word, to the organization. Uh, that, that's our recommendation as we reviewed it.
I don't know if you want to think about it, we're gonna approve the budget a little bit.
We'll be coming back after-
To when you approve the budget, you can talk about what you want to approve inside that budget on that, on the donation part. Okay? Great, I'll finish up my part then.
So, I don't forget when that comes up, Mayor, I'm, I'll stay out of that conversation since I know one of the directors.
You're one of the singers?
I'm not one of the singers, and I can't play an instrument, uh, but my brother Corey sucked all of that talent out of the Mendenhall family and put it in many choirs, including this one, and so, I'm not gonna-
Duly noted.
Okay.
Um, just as a point of reference, uh, this is the list that we've had from, from year to year, and there will be a time that we'll need to review some of these to see if they continue to qualify or if they're even still participating, that we can maybe, um, clean out, maybe some of the ones that aren't there or aren't, aren't needed anymore. So, we will carry that conversation to a future date. Um, in a summary, uh, other changes, it's kind of a bigger picture, it's why are we having this? One is the CARES Act funding. Um, we budgeted money to be spent of that CARES money we got, and we needed to put it into our budget, both the revenue side and the expense side. Uh, the sewer bond, we issued bond, um, we are starting to spend that, and so, we, we need to budget as we go through to spend it on the plant. We have a lift station, we have some trunk lines and some, uh, the actual way that we are paying the bonds, we are co-, uh, working with Mapleton City, since they are gonna be an owner of part of the plant. So, some of the budget entries will be to help in the billing of having Mapleton pay as part of that, and then we pay the whole debt service, since the debt service is in our name, and we're receiving funds from, uh, Mapleton to pay their portion. Another one is the water bond that we issued, and so, we're increasing certain things in there, as the water bonds will be spent on projects. And later this month, like I said, the library bond will be issued and the construction, we ha- have its beginnings. You've seen the church disappear next to us, and it's, uh, many people think it's gonna be a nice parking lot that's next to the city office, but in a couple of months, it will be, start to go, uh, turn itself into a library over the next year and a half. And finally, there, we're finalizing the costs of the Station sixty-two, the fire and ambulance, uh, new station, and the Adventure Heights, uh, the All-Bilities Park, as those big projects were finished this last fall, and so, we're finishing those up. So, in conclusion, um, the budget did go up six million, a lot of that is proceeds from bonding and also the CARES grant money that's, uh, that we had to budget to in order to spend it on those projects. And so, when you get to the point of approving, it's, uh, approving the budget of a hundred and thirty-eight million, one hundred and fifty-six thousands.
Okay. All right, then let's go with SFCN cable TV rate increases that, uh, Ryan would like to talk to us about.
Mayor, council, thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight to cover what is certainly not my favorite topic, but one that we have to cover nonetheless, and that is our twenty twenty-one cable TV rates. Before we jump into that, I wanna, I wanna point out a couple of important facts for us to keep in mind. The price of these cable TV channels are controlled by the content owners, by the channels themselves, not, they're not set by SFCN. Um, each year, those cable TV prices continue to go up. Last year, with the inflation rate of one point six percent, the cable TV free antenna cost went up nineteen point zero four percent. It's a little bit, little bit out of whack. Um, most channels went up about eight percent. The unfortunate thing about the off-air free TV channels is, in two thousand eight, the FCC decided that they could charge cable companies to carry those free signals across our cable, to deliver those to our customers on a high-quality HD coax line. Um, those channels lose viewers every year, they lose ad revenue, and they crank up their rates to try and compensate for that. Uh, it's a, it's a very broken industry. It's, it's struggling, it's kind of in a downward death spiral. The, uh, one example, we get the question all the time, well, why can't we just drop a couple of the expensive channels? And the unfortunate side of it is those expensive channels are channels that people subscribe to cable for, like ABC or ESPN. Um, and those channels come as a package. For ABC, if we were to try and drop ABC, that would be ABC plus eight other channels that they own and control. Um, and ABC, incidentally, was one of the worst this year in the retransmission consent rate increases. Every three years, we have to renegotiate those contracts. At the end of twenty twenty, um, ABC decided, well, we should really be paying, you know, sixty-three percent more for those channels than what we are today. And then by the end of that contract in twenty twenty-three, w- they thought we should be paying a hundred and thirty-eight percent more. They, they really wanted those rates to just go up through the roof. Um, our negotiations back and forth ultimately landed us at about thirty-two percent rate increase and then sixty-eight percent by the end of their contract. Now, we can't discuss exact dollar amounts, because by our contract, we're prohibited from doing that, but it was still pretty bad. Thirty-two percent rate increase across their channels, uh, is pretty painful. It's painful for us, it's painful for our customers, and in my opinion, it, it amounts to basically extortion. It's a matter of, you pay what they're asking, or you don't carry their channels. So, that's the unfortunate world we live in. Um, since that retransmission rate increase went into effect by the FCC in two thousand eight, we went from zero dollars nationally, cable companies paying the off-air providers just to turn around and put that same signal on our coax to get it to more viewers, to last year, eleven point six billion dollars. That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good increase in twelve years. Um, hence the increase in cable TV rates. It's the unfortunate part of the world we live in. Um- It's the unfortunate part of the world we live in. Streaming, streaming packages have suffered kind of the same woes. Most of them over the last few years have nearly doubled in cost. I think everybody has seen that. You subscribe to Hulu TV or YouTube TV and those rates go up every year. This, it's the same reason. You know, the channels that they carry and the packages they're forced into by contract, those rates go up every year, and so they have to cover those costs the same way we Some of the ways that our competitors handle those is with hidden fees. They'll, they'll, they'll add on a broadcast fee, they'll add on the regional sports fee, the installation fees, um, all sorts of different fees that make it look like the cable package is an attractive price, but when you get your bill, there's a whole bunch of fees stacked onto it. We've never done that. We don't agree with that practice, even though the FCC says legally we can do that. If we wanted to break out our retransmission consent fees and say, hey, this is, this is how much you're paying for off-air. Our cable's cheap, but we have this off-air fee. It doesn't make sense because you have no way of not paying that and still getting cable. It's just one in the same package. So it's just misleading for our customers and we, we choose not to do that. Here's the slide that everybody's asking for. These are the new rates for 2021. You can see that our basic cable goes up from 2783 to 3313. The expanded basic goes up to 10122, super digital 11232, the full package is 14733, triple play is 14318. And then the only premium that went up was Star's Encore package went up by a dollar from $10 to $11. So again, I wanted to point out, um, that these rate increases to the penny are what our channel costs went up this year. SFCN doesn't want any more money from our customers. We don't think you should have to pay more money, but unfortunately, we don't control that. These rates will go into effect if they're approved by you tonight on March 21st, and they will show up on customers' bills starting May 1st. Any questions on that so far? Okay. One of the questions that we get, um, where can I find alternatives? And really, we're not in the business of holding our customers hostage. We want to help them learn what's right for them and what's best for them. And these rate increases are pretty painful for a lot of people, and we recognize that, and we wish there was something we could do about it. There are a few places that you can go if you're looking for more information on these. One of them specifically, I'll jump right to the bottom, mybundle.tv. If you're not familiar with this, it's a free and commercial site. We have the option to partner with them and we would pay them and they would give us a kickback for subscriptions that go through their site. We're not really interested in that, but they do have a very good free tool that anybody can jump on. They can put in their zip code, they can enter a few questions about their viewing habits, how many people are in their household, what kind of shows they want, what stations are must-have stations for them. And this tool will go out and it will put together the best cost-efficient package to get them the majority of the content that they're looking for. So if they're a sports person, if they're a, a movies person, you know, it will find a package that has what the customer really wants for the best deals. And you don't have to sign up through them for any of those. You can go directly and sign up for the, the packages that they, that they recommend. This is what the site looks like. Just when you go there, if you're interested, uh, you'll be able to just start there on the left, find the best live TV alternate, alternative for you. Um, it's a good tool. It'll help you find what you're, what you're looking for content-wise. And, uh, again, we don't want to raise these rates. We unfortunately have no choice. So those are the new rates for 2021, and it'll be up to you, Mayor and Council, if we want to approve that and move forward.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. You're always fun to have each year come to us. One of these days, I'm looking for you to come say, hey, rates went down.
Wouldn't that be nice?
That would be good.
Hey, we're turning it off. The rates are going down.
Right. All right. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So we're looking, Mayor, for both, right? We, at some point, want a motion for direction on the rate increase for SFCN and then-
But we've got to go into a public hearing on-
We do indeed. So I'm, I'm gonna just pause, back the bus up.
Do what now? Go ahead.
You need to go into public hearing. You're right.
See, don't let, I just throw a straight fastball.
Straight fastball, man. I didn't even, I didn't even see that one coming.
It's not my first rodeo. Thank you. All right. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by a council member, Beck, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. There you go. All right, now let's go back to Kent, and let's talk about, uh, the fee waiver, and let's get a consensus with the council on that, and then we'll go into public hearing. The floor is yours.
So you suggested not charging one day, charging one day?
Right. So the first day when they unload all the trucks, it's 350. Um, first day of the performance would be 1,000, second day of the performance would be another 1,000. So they requested in their email if we could waive the 350 and one of the thousands and to not, um, give us 10% of their gross revenue, their gross ticket sales. So that's kind of the, the items to decide.
That's the ask. And so in your, Seth, in your little committee talking about that, I think you're okay with the 350, I think you're okay with the 1,000.
Yeah, what he allened, right? Yeah.
And what about the 10%?
Down to five.
Down to five.
That's what we suggested.
That's what I thought, that's why I wrote down there is five. Is everybody okay with that? Gordon?
Yep.
Kier?
Yep, I'm all right with that.
Okay. All right. So with that, let's go into, uh, public hearing, and, uh, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Anyone here that would like to talk about the budget, you're welcome to come up and Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any questions or comments?
This might be a good time to address Ron Johnson and just let him know tonight's probably not the night that we would say anything or approve any of your requests, but just wanted to let you know we heard you and we will consider that and talk to Dell Robinson and Ryan Reese, who runs the golf course, just so you know.
Can you speak a little louder? I'm hard here.
Oh, yes. We will consider your request. I didn't want you to leave here thinking you were not heard. It won't be in tonight's budget, though. Okay, thanks, Ron.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve FY 2021 city budget revision two.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Scobes. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
All right. That passes. Didn't we do all right there, Seth? Thank you. Good deal. All right. New business. FY 21 budget revision number two. We already did that, right? Okay. I'm done. Let's go to ordinance Z01-21, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the 338 East duplex zone change.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've seen a handful of these projects over the past several years where it's a zone change to change the zoning to R3 with a particular zoning overlay, the infill overlay. This one's really not unique, frankly. Um, in fact, this applicant has built a very similar structure as to what's being proposed tonight on a project that was done last year on 200 East, sorry, 200 West at about 100 North, 150 North, maybe. In this case, the subject property is, uh, I guess like we have on the agenda, 338 East, 100 North. Um, we have the property identified there. It's a vacant lot. Um, it's large enough to qualify for use as a duplex. The applicant adjusted their plans a little bit since the initial submittal was made to the city in order to accommodate a setback that's needed from a power line that runs along the eastern boundary of the property. And that's really where this building, uh, came to take a similar form, like I said, to that project that was done last year over on Second West. One of the things that the infill overlay suggests that we need to be particular about is making sure that, um, infill overlay projects have some kind of, um, consistent, maybe aesthetic type of connection to, to other things that exist in the neighborhood, the idea of being really the, ideally wouldn't have them stick out and, and really be, uh, a noticeable, different kind of structure or different kind of home as to what you'd see elsewhere in the neighborhood. For that reason, um, one of the people in our department took photographs of several buildings that are on surrounding blocks, and one of the things that we found was that, um, first of all, there's a lot of diversity. There's not really one particular style or anything like that that would maybe make some sense to try to follow. But in just making the structure look like a single-family home, which really is what they've done with one garage on the front side facing the street and another around on the side, we think that's, that's probably the best thing that they could do, again, to make this fit in with the neighborhood instead of really standing out. So that all being said, both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended that this proposed zone change be approved. This is always painful to admit, but it, relative to the agenda, we didn't get this listed in the new business section, but this had, I'm sorry, in the public hearing section, but this has been advertised in a variety of different ways for a public hearing tonight. So I would ask, Mr. Mayor, that you open up, uh, public hearing before the council takes action on this.
All righty. Uh, so this is a public hearing?
It needs to be before the council can act.
All right. Well, I'm getting messed up here because they're not putting them in the right order. Okay, I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anyone that's from the public that'd like to come and address the council and the mayor on this, you're welcome. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move, uh, to approve ordinance number Z01-21, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the 338 East duplex based on the following findings. The project meets the intent of the infill overlay zone. The proposed would, use would have a positive impact on the neighborhood and subject to the following conditions. The applicant constructs the building with the elevations in brick and siding, that the applicant maintains power clearances, that the applicant addresses any red lines.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
All right. That passes. Okay. Next, acceptance of the Lynn Laufson annex for further study. Uh, just a way of clarification, Lynn is my brother. Uh, he's a resident of Spanish Fork. Half his property is in Spanish Fork, half is in the county. Uh, I referred him to staff, told them to work with them on this, and so they will-
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No public hearing with this. Tonight, we're just at, here to ask that the council accept this annexation proposal for further study. So just a quick recap on what that means. At the onset then of somebody making the application like Mr. Laufson's made in this case to have property annexed into Spanish Fork, should the council do, again, what I just mentioned, accept that proposal for further study? That sets a number of different things in motion, including giving notice to a number of affected entities as is defined in Utah law, and otherwise, um, really initiating the process of annexing the property into Spanish Fork. Should you accept the annexation for further study tonight? That does not obligate the council at the end of a protest period in that process to indeed approve the annexation and to make that happen. But, um, should you not accept the annexation for further study, then it would simply die at this point tonight. By way of where the property is, uh, Scenic Drive can be seen right here on this image. And we can see River Bottoms Road right down here. Boy, you can call me struggles with that. That's a little tricky to use. So not, not quite, uh, bounded by Scenic Drive on the north side, but the subject property does have frontage on River Bottoms Road to the south. Uh, it's our understanding that the applicant is approaching the city now about having their property annexed into Spanish Fork because he is unable to obtain a building permit for an agricultural building in Utah County. And I know from experience that that's not necessarily uncommon when there maybe is some particular type of, of history to a property and how it was created and that type of a thing. Um, Utah County routinely will withhold building permits and, and use that as, as some type of a motivator to try to get people to maybe rectify, um, different zoning situations and that sort of a thing. Um, that being said, personally, I don't see any problem at all with having an agricultural building constructed on this property. I think in fact that, that goes hand in glove with some other things that we've talked about in recent years. And inasmuch as the subject property is within Spanish Fork City's annexation, uh, declaration, I think it's, it's, uh, perfectly sensible that the council would at least consider this proposal, um, for further study. So that's our recommendation tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have with me.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept of the Lynn Laufson annexation for further study.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. That passes. Ordinance 03-21, amending the title 15 land use of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code relating to various techs amendment.
Again, thank you, Mayor. This proposal involves a handful of different changes to Title 15. I am happy to spend as much time as you would like talking about these in detail, but otherwise, I'm going to simply give a fairly high-level description of what those changes are. And to start with that, um, we have had some conversations about potentially changing property that is tied to the IMTEC campus on Dalmani Road, changing that from business park to public facilities. And that being the case, uh, I've had some correspondence with, uh, both the administrator of IMTEC and then someone at the state attorney general's office about our zoning language. And frankly, I think they have had some very good suggestions for us relative to some things that we should change by way of adding an institution of higher learning, I'm sorry, higher education, uh, as a defined use in Title 15, and also, uh, something as simple as defining a public school. So with those two additions being made to that zone, as I understand it, uh, both IMTEC and, and their legal folks are comfortable having the zoning changed of that campus to public facilities, which we hope will do a few different things, uh, you know, among others, to, to clearly describe what the city's anticipation for the future use of that property would be, and otherwise to maybe help allay some fears that neighborhood residents have of how the use of that property could change in the future if, if IMTEC maybe, uh, discontinued their use of that site. in the future if IMTEC maybe discontinued their use of that site. But tonight, we're just talking about the change to those definitions, adding the definitions to Title Fifteen and making a slight modification on that as well to the private school definition. A slight modification to the definition of a wall as well. I'm going to skip one and come back to that. The last one then, and I know the council's aware that this has been in the works for quite some time, the removal of a requirement that developers host neighborhood meetings as part of a preliminary plat approval process for residential subdivisions. The, I committed to the planning commission, as I think I expressed to the council a little over a week ago, that they have, that is, the planning commission has reservations about completely doing away with some type of, an opportunity for neighborhood residents as a subdivisions going through the review process with the city to learn more information about the project and maybe to provide some input and that sort of a thing before we get to a forum like this with either the planning commission or the city council. And as I committed to the council, again, just over a week ago, we as staff are working on alternatives to this developer-hosted neighborhood meeting that I genuinely believe will be an enhancement of the process that will provide area residents, neighbors, with better opportunities to get information than what they've had in the past, which I understand is a priority for the council. It's a priority for the planning commission. It's certainly a priority for staff. So I'm very comfortable with having that language removed at this time, again, with the idea that we will be doing some things differently going forward. The biggest changes that are proposed at this time have to do with modifications to the master planned development portion of Title Fifteen. This is something that the planning commission spent a number of meetings working on. At one work session where they spent almost two hours discussing this draft, and indeed, it has been modified in a couple of ways as a result of that conversation. Again, in the spirit of trying to keep it simple, the changes that are proposed now would reduce the number of homes per acre that developers could include with master planned developments. I believe the chart that you have with the ordinance and the staff report does a good job of describing, I need to take that back. It doesn't do a good job of describing what the changes. It shows, it shows the, if you were to just refer to the chart that we have in the ordinance, so not the staff report, with the ordinance, there you can see what that reduced density would be. So for example, one of the more popular zones for residential subdivisions in Spanish Fork in recent years, R one twelve zone, historically has allowed people to have two point six nine units per acre. And that's proposed to be changed to two point six one. So fairly negligible change with that. But yet, if a developer has a fifty, maybe acre project or a hundred acre project, it's a few lots and does have a nominal impact there. Those changes are intended to go hand in glove with probably the most significant change, which is to require developers of master planned developments to maintain an average lot size for their project that matches the minimum lot size of a particular zoning district. So for example, I just mentioned that R one twelve zone, the twelve in that case connotates a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet. Now, with a master planned development, you don't have to have all of your lots larger than twelve thousand square feet. But with this proposed change, the average lot size would have to be twelve thousand square feet. Do you have any questions about that? Those changes indeed are the result of conversations that started with the two different subdivisions that were approved this last year on fourteen hundred east and some things that caused some neighbors a concern or maybe multiple concerns. The last changes have to do with some fairly unique things, but they do happen where, for example, occasionally developers will include private parks in developments, which is something that we don't want necessarily to discourage if they want to do that type of a thing. In this case, I think we're just talking about maybe a single-family neighborhood, single-family homes on individual lots. In those cases, some of that park space could be used to supplement lot space for purposes of meeting that average lot size requirement. And then also, we've had a few projects over the years where there have been some abnormally large lots that if we're just relying on an average lot size to achieve, you know, maybe a particular type of neighborhood at the end of the day, particular sized lots and that sort of a thing. If you had some anomalies, you know, again, a few lots that were really unique, in this case, the worry is actually uniquely large, they could really skew that so that at the other end of the spectrum, you might have tiny lots because you have some that are extraordinarily large. For example, we're working with one project now where there's a five acre lot in a subdivision that otherwise is fifteen thousand square foot lots, or would be fifteen thousand square foot lots but for the master planned development section. And, you know, the intent of the ordinance historically hasn't been to allow somebody to have a five acre lot in a situation like this and then maybe to be able to have a bunch of five thousand square foot lots, you know, where the idea instead is that you're going to have maybe ten, eleven, twelve thousand square foot lots and that type of a thing. And some of the proposed language would give us a mechanism to limit how some bigger lots in a project would impact, how the rest of the development could prove forward. And lastly, with this, I'm just going to mention as well that with master planned developments, this is something that we haven't changed. The council ultimately has the ability to say yes or no. So that is not something that's come up really in the past. I think we did have one subdivision this past year where it wasn't a unanimous vote, at least on the part of a council, with the master planned development as to whether that would be approved or not. But if you can maybe look at it this way, property owners, developers, by right, and what I mean by that is if they apply for a subdivision where all of the lots in a subdivision meet the minimum subdivision standards that we have in the ordinance, in a zoning district that is already applied to the property, then that's an administrative action and we're obligated to approve it, period, whoever that deciding body is. But if somebody wants to have a project approved as a master planned development where there's some give and take, you know, where maybe they have some lots that are smaller than the minimum, but they're giving by having some lots that are bigger than the minimum, or they're having reduced setbacks, different things like that, the council does have the discretion in those cases to maybe require a design to be changed or to ultimately say no, which I mentioned that because that also was the subject of quite a bit of conversation with the planning commission. And I think that that should provide some reassurance that this program really is intended to bring out the best in terms of having neighborhoods designed the best way that they can be, and that there's always that safety net that, and frankly, typically, it's the planning commission where they can, well, I need to take that back. That's not right. With master planned developments, it is the city council. That's why I'm talking about it now. Where you as the city council, if there's something that you feel isn't appropriate for maybe a particular part of the community or something that just otherwise you don't like collectively about the way a master planned development is designed, you can say no. The developer can still develop the property, but they just simply have to follow a different set of rules.
Would it still go through planning and zoning?
So if somebody proposes a standard subdivision, that's the type where they meet all the rules.
Right.
Then the planning commission is the land use authority. That's where I got tripped up just a minute ago. But with master planned developments, indeed, they come to the city council, so.
And bypass planning and zoning?
The, the planning commission makes a recommendation.
They'd still go to there.
But you, as the council, are the authority that either approve or deny those.
What's the breakout? What's the percentage of how many developments just fit the zoning, fit the rules versus master planned developments in the city?
There's a development at the corner of State Road fifty-one, the old Springville Highway and Spanish Fork Parkway. That is a standard subdivision that got approved six or seven years ago, maybe a little bit more than that even. And I would really struggle to think of another one. There's maybe one or two other out there that have happened in the past ten years. So without a doubt, the master planned development path has been attractive for developers. Typically, they can get more homes designed into projects as a master planned development because of the flexibility that that affords. And at the same time, I think we usually end up with pretty good designs. I, for a lot of reasons, I'm a fan of giving developers that kind of flexibility when they're trying to design a project. And probably the biggest thing for me is streets and how they're able to design streets where we as staff think they need to go. And because of the flexibility that they have, they generally don't lose any lots because of that. But if they need to have maybe a minimum lot width of ninety feet or a hundred feet in order to be able to have lots, that becomes a problem when you're asking them, you know, maybe to connect into streets at a certain location or something like that, because it impacts them, you know, from that density perspective and financial perspective. It just makes things a little bit harder to work through. So again, I'm a fan of the program and yet I appreciate the feedback that we received from neighbors and the planning commission and the city council that have led to what we're proposing tonight. Like everything, we've given this considerable thought, but probably it's not the last tune-up that we'll suggest going forward. Hopefully, this works for a number of years before, you know, we would suggest other changes, but that's where we're at for now.
Right. So we need a public hearing for this?
Thank you.
Good deal. I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone here that would like to come address the mayor of the council on this, you're welcome. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I have a question for Dave. So the question I have is, is we're looking at these changes. Are there any changes that spell out more specifically what the developers are giving? Some of the master plans that we've had as of late, and I'll just round it out even to the past five years, some of the comments that they've said, oh, well, for that density, you're getting a park or you're getting a this or that. And they generally refer to infrastructure that is already part of what they get regardless the density. Generally, there's not a bigger park or a nicer street or anything like that. Plus, if I remember right, the way our ordinances are written for master plans is there has to be some particular reason as to why they are doing that master plan, meaning they can't do their development because of X, Y, Z factor. And so because we're allowing them to change to a master plan, they have to then afford this city some type of benefit. And to date, I haven't seen, it doesn't seem to me that the benefits have been quite as great as the density that they're getting. Is there something in there that changes or that spells that out more specifically?
First of all, that really honestly is a great question. What you're asking was the subject of quite a bit of conversation that at least some of our staff had and that we had with the planning commission. And maybe to answer it this way, I feel like you're asking if there are any changes that would raise the bar for developers to have to get over in order to be able to qualify to have a project approved as a master planned development. And a couple of thoughts on that. First of all, admittedly, that bar has lowered over the years in a few different ways. For example, if we went back several years ago, requiring developers in master planned developments or ultimately builders to landscape yards, that was something that was different in master planned developments. That was, the bar was set higher for them because we didn't require home builders, home buyers, or anybody, developers, to do that kind of landscaping in standard subdivisions. Well, maybe I shouldn't say that we've lowered the bar for master planned developments because that standard remains. But at the same time, now we make everybody in the city landscape yards within a certain timeframe. So, you know, at least the difference isn't the same as it used to be. We also have stopped requiring developers to do things like any kind of open space in master planned developments. That's not an automatic requirement, whereas if we went way back, you know, maybe to two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine, there were those requirements in place in order to have a project qualify as a master planned development. And there are a few other things like that as well over the years to where, again, I think the requirements have become watered down. But at the same time, what developers get has also really been diminished. Probably the biggest changes happened, Mayor, you were on the council back when we used to give developers bonus density, if you will. So I referenced that R one twelve zone and the idea that developers could do about two point seven homes on every acre in projects that are zoned that way. It used to be to where you could almost double that if a developer were to do different things. And we actually had a chart that said if you do X, you get Y in terms of bonus density and so forth. And really, the program has changed from those days to where we are now, to where it's just about flexibility in design. That's really all that it is. And that's really why, at least in theory, developers aren't getting more density than what they could with a standard subdivision. Now, in reality, it's a little bit different because not every property is configured so perfectly that you can, you can fit the same exact number of homes in. But I do think that the change that's proposed tonight does further reduce what developers get by going that master planned development route. But at the same time, you know, like I said, I believe that just the flexibility that they're afforded typically does get them to the point to where they can do the things that make us as staff feel comfortable. That if you look at the very last provision in the master planned development part of the ordinance, this is what I think Councilman Scobes is referring to, the findings that the city council must make before you approve a project as a master planned development. And that language, I think largely by design, is fairly vague and does give the council considerable discretion in terms of finding whether or not a project, you know, has crossed that bar, that threshold. But that really is why we haven't addressed it on that end with what's proposed now. We certainly can if that's something that the council would like us to do. I think we felt rather that just simply, you know, kind of given the density a haircut, that that's appropriate for now. And I think that that actually is important in terms of trying to make sure that everybody, maybe neighbors and so forth, are just comfortable with the types of projects that get approved ultimately by the council. But I think that's probably the most appropriate step to take now. Does that answer your question?
It does. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance dash zero three, excuse me, number zero three dash four one one, amending Title Fifteen land use of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code related to various text amendments.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
All right, that passes. And we've already done that. Resolution 21-04 repealing Resolution 16-12 and replacing it with a resolution authorizing the public works director and city engineer to execute water application concerning water rights, water shelters, and other related documents with the state engineer or any canal or irrigation company. Did I get it all?
I think that's it. Thank you. Mayor, council, we discovered recently that the city engineer, the public works director needed to sign some documents for some irrigation company shares that we have. And our resolution that we had on file related only to water rights with the state engineer's office. And so this resolution would extend similar authority to make, to sign the forms or the paperwork that needs to be filed with those irrigation companies to allow a transfer of shares, just like it would for water rights with the state engineer's office. Any questions about that?
Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 21-04 repealing Resolution 16-12 and replacing it with a resolution authorizing the public works director or city engineer to execute water application concerning water rights, water shares, and other related documents with the state engineer or any canal or irrigation company.
Second. We don't need a public hearing on the resolution, do we? Okay. A motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Argal. This also will be a roll call vote. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
And that passes. Okay. Mapleton Lateral Trail Phase III Agreement.
Okay, we're kind of excited about this project. It involves a trail connection between the Spanish Fork River Trail and Mapleton's Bonneville Shoreline Trail along the bench, the most complicated section of which goes under US 6 and under the railroad tracks. And the hope is to actually go across the railroad tracks, but we're working on a plan to go under. And so it's kind of, it'll be quite the feat either way. But that being said, there's already an existing bridge underneath US 6 that we're hoping to utilize, and it'll extend the river trail down past the golf course quite a ways along the river too, and then kind of through the windmill area, which is pretty awe-inspiring to walk under. And so we think this will be kind of a neat asset. We have a grant through MAG. This was a joint application with Mapleton and Spanish Fork to MAG. And the match for the grant is 6.77%, which would be shared, half Mapleton and half Spanish Fork. So any questions?
About the trails?
Yeah.
What timeframe would this be, Chris?
I...you want the plan or what I think will happen?
Let's get the truth, Chris. We just want the truth.
I think, I think it'll take longer to work with the railroad than the next couple of years. I'm saying three years, but could be sooner if the railroad, if a miracle happens.
Okay.
Good deal. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with Mapleton City for the Mapleton Trail Connection Project.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Board appointments. I would like to appoint Jesse Carden to the planning commission.
That's a good idea. I'll approve that.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I move adjourn to local building authority.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing to allow public input regarding the insurance and sale of not more than 23 million aggregate principal amount of lease revenue bonds, Series 2021, and so forth and so forth.
Any discussion before?
Do we, do we just need to go into a public hearing, or do you need to talk to us?
Just a second. It's, the parameters resolution that you adopted notified the public of this public hearing. There's no action that you'll take tonight. It's just an opportunity for the public to comment on the lease revenue bonds for the library.
Okay. So it's just, if anybody wants to talk, and then there's no action.
Right.
Good deal. All right, I'd entertain to go into a public hearing.
Sumo.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the public that'd like to talk about this, you're welcome. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Sumo.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion to go back into city council.
Sumo.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, before we close, just to touch base on that, and I think maybe I'll get Kent to weigh in for a second, or he can give you some hand signals, because I have a microphone and he's all the way over there. But we'll be going, we will be, based on the authority given from the parameters resolution and the feedback that we received tonight in the public hearing, we will, we plan on having a closing on this bond end of the month, Kent?
26th.
26th of February. And although the parameters resolution has it listed at 23, we wouldn't go beyond the 20 million, 100 and some thousand dollars, I think, to include some of the closing costs. I think it's important to remember, and wonderful to identify, that this includes the ability to do a one-time reamortization once we close the project. So any funds that are not spent, we can actually give back to the bank, and they will, they will give us a new payment schedule. So we, it'll be as if we borrowed less. For example, we're going to borrow 20 million dollars, we only need 19 million to construct it, we can give back a million dollars, and it'll be just, it'll be re-amortized to a 19 million dollar loan. Pretty cool to be able to do that. So it allows us to be flexible in getting the rate right now when getting rates are great, 1.67, I think is the rate. So it's amazing. And then also flexible getting the dollar amount right when the construction is actually completed a year and a half from now. So super exciting on that LBA bond.
Thank you.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for everyone that was here and for all those who are watching it.